Welcome to the City of Roswell Mayor and Council Meeting of Monday, June 23rd. I am Mayor Pro Tem Lee Hills. I'd like to introduce my colleagues and council members present. We have Councilmember Christine Hall, Councilmember David Johnson, Councilmember William Morthland, and Councilmember Alan Sells. This evening Mayor Kurt Wilson and Councilmember Sarah Beeson have an excused absence and will not be here tonight. I will now turn it over to Senior Vice President and Deputy City Administrator Sharon Izzo to explain how this meeting will be run.
Thank you. In accordance with Section, Chapter 3.7 of the City Code, the City Council shall hold regular public meetings. The purpose of City Council meetings is for the public to participate and speak on agenda items that constitute formal decisions by the elected body. These items are listed on the published agenda, which can be accessed via the city website prior to the meeting. This is a public meeting and some items do require a formal public hearing. An important component of City Council meetings is to hear directly from residents on items listed on the agenda. Residents are at the top of our organizational chart, therefore, public comments or questions are essential for mayor and council to consider as they contemplate each decision. To ensure an accurate record of the meeting, if you would like to speak on an item, please complete a comment card located at the back of the room. We ask that everyone observe the principles of mutual respect and display the appropriate demeanor during the course of the meeting, which should be and is reflective of our great community. With respect to the proceedings, we ask that attention is given to the person speaking. If it is necessary to have an independent conversation, please exit the rear doors to the vestibule area. In addition, we ask that you silence any electronic devices at this time. The Mayor Pro Tem is the presiding officer over the meeting and will ensure an orderly exchange of comments, questions, and discussion. We encourage everyone in attendance and the viewing audience to visit the city website for information on news, events, and meetings. We also encourage you to participate in the various activities and offerings in the city, which can be found on roswell365.com. There are a number of events upcoming in the City of Roswell which promote community, physical activity, and leisure, as we all make Roswell the number one family community in America.
Thank you, Senior VP Izzo. Now, I would like to call Reverend Charles W. Savage II, our pastor this evening of Sardis Methodist Church, the front for the invocation and moment of silence. Please, sir.
Mayor Pro Tem Hills, if it's okay, I want to flip the order of this. I want to do the moment of silence first.
Yes, sir.
And the rationale behind that is that when I was on my way over here tonight, I heard that there is a potential ceasefire between Israel and Iran, and I want us to focus on that and ask God to bring that to fruition.
Thank you.
Most gracious and eternal God, your children come to this place. And Lord, we come because you have brought us into this great community, a community where unlike some other places in the world, we can live in peace. And Lord, we thank you for those who serve, those who put out our fires, for those who keep our streets safe, our police officers; Lord, for those who are standing on the dais who provide the direction for our great community. And Lord, we come tonight and we ask that as we gather in this room, that you would pour out your Spirit, that we might feel the presence, and that the wisdom that you have might go forward. Lord, we ask these things. We come, as I said earlier, with the confidence of children because you have promised us that we're your children. And our prayer is that we may see each and every one of the other as you see us. We ask all of these things in your mighty and powerful name, and all of God's children said, amen.
Thank you Pastor Savage. If now, for the pledge of allegiance, we'll have our Georgia Army National Guard Specialist E-4 Andrew Claxton come to the front here and lead us in the pledge.
Please join me in saying the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, I'd like to invite my colleagues, other council members, to meet me down with Specialist Claxton, and we will have the proclamation. Whereas Andrew Claxton answered the call to serve his country with courage, enlisting in the United States Marine Corps Reserve in 1998, the day after his high school graduation. And whereas Andrew trained at Marine Corps Recruit Depot, Paris Island, then completed marine combat training at Camp Lejeune, aircraft crash fire rescue training at Goodfellow Air Force Base, and basic airborne training at Fort Benning, Georgia, before serving honorably from 1998 to 2002 as an aircraft crash fire rescue specialist with the Marine Wing Support Squadron 472, achieving the rank of Lance Corporal. And whereas Andrew transferred to the Georgia Army National Guard in 2002, where he served as an airborne infantryman, 11B, with the 121st Infantry, airborne, long-range surveillance until 2004. And whereas during his 2003 deployment to Iraq, Andrew participated in more than 350 tactical missions through hostile territories, including the Sunni Triangle, came under enemy fire and mortar attack, and played a critical role in ground reconnaissance and intelligence, supporting over 15 U.S. and allied military agencies. And whereas his valor and service were recognized with numerous honors, including the National Defense Service Medal, Global War on Terrorism Medal, Armed Forces Reserve Medal with M Device, Combat Infantry Badge, Parachutist Badge, Army Service Ribbon, and the Overseas Service Bar. And whereas, following his honorable discharge in 2004, Andrew continued serving his country in civilian capacities overseas under a top-secret CSI clearance with the Department of State, supporting U.S. missions in embassies and consulates throughout the Middle East from 2005 to 2010. And whereas, Andrew furthered his education by earning a Bachelor of Science in Political Science from Kennesaw State University, and a Master of Professional Studies in Strategic Public Relations from George Washington University. And whereas, Andrew remains deeply involved in the Roswell community as a court-appointed special advocate, ASA, for children in foster care, a troop leader for Trail Life USA Troop Number 0184, and an advocate for veteran mental health and well-being. And whereas, he serves currently as a manager of professional services at NICE CX1, did I say that right? Thank you, leading a team of consultants and applying his strategic leadership to the global AI technology sector. Now, therefore, I, Lee Hills, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Roswell, do hereby name Andrew Claxton, an esteemed veteran of Roswell, and call upon all our citizens to recognize his outstanding service to our country and our community, and that there is no higher calling than those who serve in the armed forces.
I've always loved the City of Roswell, but you go and do a really nice thing like this, thoughtful thing like that, I'm never leaving. So, thank you, and I would love to quickly recognize my wife of 21 years, Stephanie, for all of her love and support over the many years, including all those deployments, my wonderful family, my father Gary and Susan. I don't know how on earth they supported me when I had a crazy idea at 17, when I was still in high school, to join the military. Thank you for your support, and more importantly, your prayers over the many years, your love. So, thank you.
Thanks for having me. We have work to do. All right. Next up on our agenda, if Councilmember Christine Hall would mind revealing the upcoming events for the City of Roswell, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Hills. Announcements and upcoming events. Roswell 365, this is from Roswell 365. So, visit roswell365.com for information on events in the City of Roswell. This is a community calendar for events hosted by the city, local nonprofits, businesses, civic groups, and religious organizations hosting community events in Roswell. And we've got a lineup of exciting events coming up in Roswell that you won't want to miss. Riverside Sounds this Saturday, June 28th, from 7:30 to 9:30 at Roswell Riverside Park. This month, we welcome Tombaho. Tombaho effortlessly blends the infection rhythms of salsa, the groove of funk, the electrifying power of Latin rock, and the smoothness of R&B. The Roswell Fourth of July Celebration is only a couple of weeks away. Join us be, right here at City Hall. It's the best in North Fulton, offering fresh produce, handmade goods, and local charm. And for details on all these and upcoming events, visit roswell365.com, your go-to calendar for everything happening in our city.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. I appreciate that. Next, we have the consent agenda for this evening. Does council have any questions or comments regarding the consent agenda? Okay. Are there any Roswell residents that would like to speak on the consent agenda? Seeing that there are none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Councilmember Moreland? Do I have a second? Councilmember David Johnson? All right, all those in favor, please raise your hands. All right, motion is approved unanimously. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the regular agenda. City Clerk Nancy Long, would you please read the first item? Forgive me, I believe your mic may be turned way down. Try that one more time, if you would, please, ma'am.
Is this better?
Thank you.
Comprehensive Growth Plan 2045 Public Hearing Project Kickoff, presented by Michelle Alexander, Director of Community Development.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and members of the council. This is the kickoff of our comprehensive plan for the time period of 2045. Five years ago, you put together a plan called 2040, and now it's time to update that work. You're launching it as an initiative to create an economic and development growth plan, and it's going to be slightly different in that it really focuses on the technical aspects of marrying economic development with infrastructure, investment planning, along with the other elements of your comp plan. So, we're preparing for the 2045 horizon, so that's the long picture, but the plan has five-year project lists. So, we have a list for capital improvements, a five-year timeframe, and we have a five-year timeframe for a work, action work plan, a work program. And the focus on this project will be to have an implementation plan. So, rather than a laundry list of projects and things we like to do and aspirations, it's really focusing on an implementation program. The state does require, we have a public hearing, and the first hearing is just to announce the fact that we're getting started. We are just getting started. And it's to let the folks know that there will be a regular schedule published, there will be opportunities for information and engagement. And then, the public hearing portion is not, there's no action requested from council this evening, there's no action requested. The public hearing is only a comment period if anyone in the community wishes to comment on the process or on the schedule. So, it's a narrow focus on our public hearing tonight. The project management plan is organized, of course, with council, mayor and council directing us on our marching orders. All of the plans you've approved recently, the master transportation plan a year ago, or now two years ago, I guess, your economic strategic plan, all of those different plans are your directives to us, and this is a chance to sew them together in a new document. Even though community development, our shop is the custodian of that project, and the custodian of the document, if you will, the policy document, we're really co-chairing this effort with our colleagues in economic development and also financial analysts and business analysts with Darrell and Bob. And then, each of the departments essentially are responsible for their own area. So, the infrastructure planning and facility planning that will be asked, that the different departments will be leading and informing the overall plan, will be their area. So, they will, each of the chapters in the comprehensive plan actually refer to transportation or a parks and rec component, the economic development component. So, the overall framework for this growth plan is your economic strategy and your economic growth, and we're going to be looking at how infrastructure from all the different areas of expertise or special area expertise feed into that and take projects you've already decided upon and work with you to give you information about prioritization. You have a stakeholder committee that you will be deciding upon. We'll be coming back to you July 14th to see who you would like to appoint for that committee. And then, we have a consultant team that brings the expertise from Kimley Horn with planning, infrastructure, engineering, and we have John Thule from Kimley Horn here this evening, and also KB Advisory, folks. And so, we have John Gerber, and we have Gabby Oliviera also here. You might recognize that KB Advisory also worked with us on our TAD and did the crunching of numbers and help us advising on that. The purpose is really to get your official vision. I do want to underscore and say how much policy, how much staff really relies on this document. Anytime an investor comes into our shop, anytime a developer comes in, the builders come in, folks want to do something unusual, we go to this comprehensive plan to say, is that what policy, is that what our policy leaders want, or is it not what we want? So, if you want to be able to say yes to something, let's put it in the policy. If you want to say no to something, that needs to be in this policy. So, it serves as a legal document on your land use decisions, and it's required for those of us to have zoning regulation. The state says, hey, you can have that police authority, you can have zoning regulations, but if and only if you have this plan that says we thought about it, we deliberated it, and everything in our rules has a reason for this, towards this plan. So, it is a requirement, and it does have legal impact. Similarly, it's required for impact fees. So, I'm not going to go into that this evening about what impact fees are and how they function. It is a fee, though, that the City of Roswell has chosen to put on for projects, a one-time fee to help cover the cost of what growth costs. So, when you have new parks because you have a new set of population or new needs because of the growth, it's a one-time fee. If you're going to have that fee, you do have to also have a comprehensive plan. So, you can't have those privileges of governance without having the comprehensive plan. Requirements are, we have two, at least two, public hearings. So, this is the first one, like I said, just for comment on the fact that we're kicking off, and if anyone has any comments on the process. We'll have one at the end as well. It's required when the draft is ready for you all to consider moving it forward. We are required to have a stakeholder committee. There's different elements of the plan. I won't read each of those items, but it just shows to you the complexity of the work and why we need all the different departments coming together to make it a useful plan that we will implement and keep alive, and informing us as we make decisions year over year, and informing you also on when you make budget, how this needs to be considered if you want the policy to be enacted. The timeframe, we're just getting started. We, the consultants are, we're exchanging all the data, they're starting to put together information. We'll be developing the plan through December, through this fall. There will be several deliverables in the fall related to the economic strategy, cost-benefit modules, and other aspects of the fiscal analysis. And then, we're looking to wrap up as we go into January and April, but there will be several deliverables related on the economic side early this fall. That's the big run-through. I wanted to say the next immediate steps is what we need to get to you, the specific dates. We'll have that up on the web within a month or less, by July 14th, when we come back and talk to you about establishing a committee, and we'll have the scheduling at that time.
All right. Thank you very much, Director Alexander. Does any of our council have a question or comment that you'd like to share? All right, then I'll turn it over to Roswell residents. Anybody that has any comments, questions? Yes, ma'am, come on up.
My name is Courtney Rosier, and I live at 540 Hembry Road. So, let me answer my first question, actually, about the publishing of the date that the more detailed schedule would be published. So, my next question is, what is the communication plan to inform citizens that information has been posted and are updated to the information site? I also have questions in regards to the stakeholders committee. If you could provide us some more information in how that committee is formed, or who would be serving on that stakeholder committee? And then, also, in light of this being an election year for the city, how are the stakeholders, who are members of the governing authority, chosen? Is it in a way that will ensure that the governing authority stakeholders are still a part of mayor and council when the plan is implemented as suggested in OCGA 110-12-1-04, Section 2A, Identification of Stakeholders? Thank you.
Director Alexander, can you address any of these questions for us real quick?
A little bit, a little bit.
And if you don't mind, I will say, tonight is just about the process and the timeline, so we're not outlining that specifically yet. Get me on track if I've gone astray there, Director, but not to reveal those yet because they haven't been established, the timeline, the dates, but with the protocol, please.
Exactly, and thank you. And we just, thank you for your patience with it, that we will have on the timeline for all the different, any of the activities that are planned or when the deliverables. At the very least, we are looking at having the webpage within the next three weeks. The webpage will be dedicated to the project, so it will be able to, we'll be able to give information, including what the communication plan states. And we do have to put together a plan. We can't just, I mean, it is actually required also by the state that we spell out how we're going to be engaging the communications piece of it. Regarding the stakeholder committee, the state doesn't specify what you're required, very much what you're required to do. The state gives a large list of stakeholders to consider. Most of them, when I look at it, are primarily economic development, business leaders, property owners, a lot of folks who are related to the growth. There are also, there's also a statement typically about neighborhood leadership, and so you have a whole range of stakeholders. The only thing that's required is that you have elected officials on that stakeholder, and that will be up to council to decide how you want to do that. So, we wouldn't be able to answer that question of how you're going to decide it at this stage, so that will have to be worked through with council's will.
Beautiful, thank you. Any other comments from our Roswell residents? All right, so following that, I think we wrapped that up. Did we have any more comments or anything from this body, from the council? All right, well, this is a discussion-only item, so we will move on. Thank you, Director Alexander. City Clerk, would you please read the second item on the regular agenda?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem, this is an appeal of revocation of massage license for Heavenly Foot Massage located at 11680 Alpharetta Highway, Suite 220, Roswell, Georgia. This will be presented by Chief of Police and Senior Vice President James Conroy.
Thank you. Chief Conroy, if you'd come forward, please, sir, and present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and City Council. This item is an appeal of the revocation of the massage establishment license for Heavenly Foot Massage. On May the 14th, 2025, City Administrator Randy Knighton revoked the license for the Heavenly Foot Massage. On May 13th, 2025, Roswell Police Department Special Investigation Section conducted an operation at the Heavenly Foot Massage 11680 Alpharetta Highway. Officers discovered the following. Seven employees were found working at the establishment, and there were five customers inside. None of the employees possessed a Georgia massage therapist license, nor a City of Roswell massage establishment work permit. Five of the employees were found to be performing massage. Two employees were not engaged in massage, but were found to be working other functions at the time. These seven employees were cited accordingly. The owner, Young Jin Lu, later arrived at the location and was cited for allowing seven employees to work without the state massage therapist license nor Roswell work permit. Other violations that were discovered, there was no licensed massage therapist on-site. The license for the registered massage therapist was not posted and could not be located. There was no owner, manager, or supervisor on the premises as required by the ordinance. None of these seven employees were listed on the establishment license application, which is also required by the ordinance. As a result, the city administrator revoked the massage establishment license, and the business was closed and red-tacked. This is not the first time the city has shut down this establishment. On March 18th, 2024, Roswell Police Department and Code Enforcement conducted a license check at this location. They were found to be operating without a 2024 massage establishment license. The location was closed, the business then submitted the proper application, and they were permitted to reopen. Then again, on January 2nd of this year, Roswell Police and Code Enforcement conducted a license check at this location. They were found to be operating without a 2025 massage establishment license and were closed by the RPD and Code Enforcement. The business submitted the proper application, and they were permitted to reopen on January 14th, 2025. This marks the third time this establishment has been shut down in the past 14 months for licensing and permitting infractions. Staff recommends denial of this appeal.
Thank you, Chief.
I will now turn the podium over to the appellant.
Thank you.
Okay, so responding to, I didn't know it was going to be that much. The first time we were closed was because we didn't have the business license, and we didn't have the business license because we couldn't get the massage establishment license. And to do that, I remember last time was, the second time we got closed was because we were supposed to, what is that called? Publish a DBA for our business, and we went down to Fulton County Courthouse, October of '24, and we waited two and a half months, and by the end of December, they still did not process our paper. So, from January, you know, immediately the first of the year, someone came and said, you don't have license, so we're closing you down. But we said, we already applied for the DBA publishing at the Fulton County Courthouse, went several times, and they said, well, we just don't have the system to, what is that called? Yeah, process. So, anyways, we told them, it's an emergency, our business is closed. They finally, after sitting there a whole day, they finally said, okay, you know what? We had someone to hire up come, and we'll just hand-do it for you. So, they allowed our DBA publication, even though we've been in business since 2009. Anyways, and then we brought that up, and that's how we got reopened. And the first time we got shut down was because we had to submit some kind of, some kind of a bond, what is it called?
Surety.
Surety bond, okay. Jeez, you know everything. Okay, here it is. Thank you. And we, I called several insurance agencies, and they said, well, it's got to be a clicky, and we got to be able to click on it to be able to sell that to you, surety bond from the City of Roswell. So, I called a few other ones, and they said it's not there. And after about a month doing that, then we got an email saying that it's not necessary anymore. But we still got shut down because of that. So, those were the first two times, which, you know. And third time, legitimately, yes. Operations, we did not have anybody with licensed massage therapists. We do have some with workers permit, not all. Now, we've been open since 2009, and we never had as much licensing issues as now. I guess the rules have changed, and the city has made different laws since then. And we only do foot massage, we don't do body massage. Our rooms are open to the public, we have cameras everywhere, watching every piece of everything, except the bathrooms. And, you know, ethically, morally, we've done nothing wrong. According to city ordinance, yes, we have broken that law. So, to rectify that, I have hired licensed massage therapists. But the problem with that is, they don't want to work for me, because they said, what do you have? I said, I got foot massage. You got body massage? I said, no, I don't. They said, well, how much you charge? I said, $60. How much of that are you going to give me? They said, I don't know, 50%? They're like, $30 plus tip? No. Nobody's going to work for me. So, after posting a lot on Indeed.com, Glass Store, all these other ones, no one wants to work. So, only other option is to raise prices, right? So, either I give them $50, which is what they want per massage, and I take that extra $10 left, which is barely going to cover my materials besides rent, forget that. So, I have to raise prices. Okay, if I raise prices, who's going to want to come for the same foot massage they've been getting for $60? Now, the same thing for $80. Doesn't make sense. So, okay, raise it. But I have made some changes. I have pictures, too. I don't know how I can show you on the iPad. So, before the foot massages, pretty much, you come in, you pick the salt that you want, rose, eucalyptus, or lavender, we put that in your foot soak, 15 minutes while you soak your feet. During that 15 minutes, you soak your feet. massage therapists. We do have some with workers permit, not all. Now, we've been open since 2009, and we never had as much licensing issues as now. I guess the rules have changed, and the city has made different laws since then. And we only do foot massage. We don't do body massage. Our rooms are open to the public. We have cameras everywhere, watching every piece of everything, except the bathrooms. And, you know, ethically and morally, we've done nothing wrong. According to city, you know, ordinance, yes, we have broken that law. So to rectify that, I have hired licensed massage therapists. But the problem with that is, they don't want to work for me. Because they said, what do you have? I said, I got foot massage. You got body massage? I said, no, I don't. They said, well, how much you charge? I said, $60. How much of that are you going to give me? They said, I don't know, 50%? They're like, $30 plus tip? No. Nobody's going to work for me. So after posting lot on Indeed.com, Glassdoor, all these other ones, no one wants to work. So only other option is to raise prices, right? So either I give them $50, which is what they want per massage, and I take that extra $10 left, which is barely going to cover my materials, besides rent, forget that. So I have to raise prices. Okay. If I raise prices, who's going to want to come for the same foot massage they've been getting for $60? Now, the same thing for $80. Doesn't make sense. So, okay, raise it. But I have made some changes. I have pictures too. I don't know how I can show you on the iPad. So before the foot massages, pretty much, you come in, you pick the salt that you want, rose, eucalyptus, or lavender. We put that in your foot soak, 15 minutes while you soak your feet. During that 15 minutes, we give a five-minute massage here, five-minute here, and a five-minute here. Remaining 45 minutes is on your left and right leg, and that's pretty much it. So what cha, what changes do I make? Well, recently, I went to Knoxville, Tennessee. I was going to open an ice cream shop there called Crazy Moo, but hasn't happened yet because of stuff. But there's a business called Wake, Wake, you wouldn't know this one, Foot Sanctuary. I have pictures of them, too. I went and got a foot massage. It's $140, and it's only for 20 minutes of massage. So it's expensive. Their foot soak, wonderful. It's got foam, it's got essential oils, it's got clay, it's got flowers. Beautiful presentation, and I guess it's really good for your skin, too, right? But I don't think my customer's going to want to pay $140 for 20-minute massage. But I think that is reasonable to charge $80 for an improved hand-copper-made bowl that I ordered from India. It's actually for one of my other businesses that are, it's about to open in Miami. So I brought that up here, and we're going to use that with the flowers and the essential oils to justify that $20 price hike. Is that enough to have my licensed massage therapist to work for me? Still no, because the profit's still not high enough. To be able to break that even is, I'm going to have to start offering body massage. So I put up curtains, we did some decorations, which I also have pictures. I don't know how I can show you that. If you want to just pass the iPad, I don't know. But, so it looks really nice. And hopefully, because I have bought the best two-inch gel pads and the best cushions, and really nice atmosphere, that people will actually pay $120 for a body massage, and with all licensed massage therapists. And I've updated the decorations. We, you know, repainted and everything. So I got Instagram ready for getting the customers. I'm ready to donate a whole bunch of stuff to church, and all these women's groups. And I say women, because 95% of my customers are women. Other 5% is the husband that they drag in there. But besides that, I got to target my audience and try to get them to come in. I'm going to be giving them out for free, $100 ones, lots of them, so they can come, so that my employees was to be able to make money first, and to get that rolling, you know? So it's like reopening a new business again. So that's my plan. I have some pictures I'd like to show you of the changes that I've made. And the city ordinance that was violated, which is the licensed massage therapies, non-licensed massage therapists, now I have four tomorrow coming for interview because of my new prices. So all from Indeed.com, and they're willing to work. And I have them lined up for tomorrow. My place is pretty much ready. And I'd like a chance for you to let me reopen, so I can follow the rules to the T, to the city of Roswell. And, yeah, I mean, I hope you come. You have really good foot and calf skin from the soaks.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for sharing that.
Okay.
Chief Conroy, do you have anything else to add there? And I will note that our police department does a fine job of inspecting and making sure that all of our massage or anything related businesses here are upstanding businesspeople in our community. And I trust what Chief Conroy has documented here.
Can I add one more thing?
Sure. Just real quick.
Real quick, sorry. Also, I never did body massage, because I don't like doing the body massage business. Now I have to. But I do plan on routinely making random checks by the other therapists to make sure nothing is going on, and to keep the whole place clean.
Thank you. Chief Conroy, is your recommendation denial on this, based on your findings?
Correct. I recommend denial of this appeal.
Thank you. So now I'll go to our council. Does council have any, any comments?
I got a question. Chief, so the appellant has brought forth a bunch of business issues, which I certainly understand. But let me ask this question of you. What would be the process if we deny him? Can he reapply for his full body massage at some later date? How would that work?
There's a number of issues here that are in the ordinance, one of which is, if there are three or more convictions of this location, then nothing can reopen there within five years. This, we are registering nine convictions at this time.
Okay. I guess I would say, you know, this body, before I even became a part of this body, has worked very, very hard to put these positions, these ordinances in place to protect women and to protect our city. We take them seriously, and so it seems pretty straightforward that we have, we have a real problem here, a continuing problem. So I would, I would say that the answer would be, we take this chief's recommendation. Thank you.
Any other council member have a comment? All right, we'll take it to the public. Does anybody from the public have a comment here? All right. Final chance here. Council members, anything? All right. That being no further discussion, do I hear a motion on this item? Anyone? Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Motion to deny the appeal of the revocation of massage license. Is that correct, Attorney Davidson?
That's correct.
Thank you.
All right. And do I have a second? Councilmember Morethlin. All right. All of those in favor, please raise your hands. All right. This, this item is denied, and that's made, made public by unanimous vote. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chief.
Okay.
Our third item on the agenda will be presented by City Clerk, Ms. Long.
Mayor Protem, this item is approval to pursue a grant from the Federal Highway Administration from the Safe Streets and Roads for All SS4A Program. This will be presented by Greg Nicholas, Interim Director of Transportation.
Thank you very much, Ms. Long. Interim Transportation Director Greg Nicholas, please come forward. There you are. Thank you.
Good evening.
All right.
All right. So in late 2023, the city of Roswell was awarded $200,000 for a Safe Streets for All grant from the U.S. Department of Transportation, I think, to complete a safety action plan. Following approval of the safety action plan, the city may apply for SS4A implementation grant to help fund projects and strategies identified in the safety action plan. Staff has identified three projects from the safety action plan totaling approximately $10 million. The three projects shown on your screen, Project One is Mimosa Boulevard from State Route 120 Marietta Highway to Magnolia Street. Just the potential features would include curb extensions, raised crosswalks, RFBs, and speed tables. Project Two is on Wavetree Drive from Woodstock Road to State Route 92 West Crossville Road. Potential features on that road would be speed tables, dynamic feed, dynamic feedback signs, chevrons, and a mini roundabout. And then Project Number Three would be on Roxburg Drive from Old Alabama to Roxburg Drive. And this would be sidewalk on one side of the road, potentially by narrowing the existing pavement. Staff's recommendation is to pursue an implementation grant in the amount of $8 million to fund the two traffic calming projects and the one sidewalk project as part of the Slowdown in Roswell Initiative. And this, this item would require a 20% match, which will be requested as part of the FY26 budget. And the match would be $2 million. With that, I will answer any questions.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Interim Director Nicholas. Do I have any comments from this council? All right. How about the public? Do we have anybody from the public that would like to speak to this one? Yes, sir. Come on up.
I was looking on the agenda. Correct. Project is that you request between, or estimate the grant between $2.5 million to $25 million, which is basically difference of 10x. I never saw such an estimate of 10x, from $2.5 to $25 million. I would like to explanation how it was done, or who is doing it, which idea. You have companies, we all have companies, and we have budget, and we think, but how much it costs, but 10x? If no one can answer, I appreciate it. And you are asking this money to approve for the budget of 26. My question is, how long it will take to finish the job? In one year, two, three, four? If this is the key period of time of several years, why we need to pay in a budget the whole amount in one year? Would be, like we always do, and you do, there's a project, we pay one-third at the beginning, and a half, or whatever it's agreed. So I don't think so we need to pay all the amount in one year, because I believe the project cannot be finished in one year. Such a big project could be take five years. Why Roswell need to pay 20%? Who is going to pay the 80%? Last question, you give me the answer. So if you can answer me the other question, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Roman. Interim Director Nicholas, would you, would you mind addressing those? I believe the first one was an explanation of the range. If you would just give, if you would give Roman and everybody listening,
Yeah.
Break down on that, how that works. Explain the grant, the grant process.
So the first and the third question, the $2.5 to $25 million, that's the, 2.5 is the minimum amount of a grant that you can go after with the U.S. DOT. And then 25 million would be the maximum. So that's, we didn't set the range, that was the U.S. Department of Transportation.
It's not a project. It's a grant.
Yeah. Yeah, it's just a grant. Yeah. And as far as who's paying, that, that would be the U.S. Department of Transportation. And that's the, so it's 80%. That's the federal part. And then the 20% is the local share.
If you're Roswell, you need to pay 20%.
That'll come, come from federal. Yes. Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you very much.
And as far as how long, with federal funds, takes several years.
Or someone will cancel it, right?
No.
Well, once that's been identified, right, what the project cost is identified.
Once we, if we win the, if we win the grant, then we'll enter into a grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Transportation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Does, do any of my colleagues, council members, have any comments or additions they'd like to say? Yes?
Any more public comments?
I hadn't gone there yet.
Okay.
Okay. Seeing none here. Anybody from the public like to make a comment? All right, back to council. Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. This initiative represents an important first step in what I hope will be a series of targeted efforts to improve the quality of life and safety of Roswell residents and, of Roswell residents. And as stated in the city address, the mayor made it clear, if a mom can't safely walk with her kids in her own neighborhood without a threat of being hit by a car, then we've got work to do. And tonight, we're continuing to, to complete that work. The three corridors identified in this grant application, Mimosa Boulevard, Wavetree Drive, and Roxburg Drive, are one of the most dangerous roads in Roswell. These streets consistently rank high in resident reported speeding concerns and pedestrian safety concerns. But pursuing this grant, we're taking a data-informed step towards addressing this risk, improving pedestrian safety, and advancing our Slowdown in Roswell initiative in the areas that's most urgently needed. So I cannot wait to make a motion for this.
Before that, does anyone else have a comment up here? Okay. Well, Councilmember Johnson, would you like to make the motion here?
It would be one of my favorite motions whilst, in the last 18 months, or however long I've served here, because it feels like 18 years. A motion to approve, motion for approval to pursue a grant from the Federal Highway Administration from the Safe Streets and Roll, and Roads for All SS4A Program.
Excellent. And do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Our Eastsiders are in the House. Councilmember Sells. All right, all in favor, please raise your hand. And it passes with jubilance. Approved. Great. All right. Last on the agenda is the City Attorney's Report. City Attorney David Johnson, do you have anything?
David Davis.
Sorry. I just, I just promoted you.
I'm not a attorney.
I just promoted you. I got excited.
Thank you. The item I have is approval of a resolution authorizing the city of Roswell to acquire approximately 24 acres of land located at 365 Hardscrabble Road in the amount of 7.5 million. As this council knows, and most people know, in 2016, the city acquired 25 acres off Chafin Road that is directly adjacent to this. This would tie into that property and give us approximately 49 or 50 acres to be used as a park. This property has been desired by the city since before I started here. I know Mayor Wood tried to get it. I heard Pug Mabry tried to get it. And it looks like we have a chance to finally get it. The price is 7.5 million, and we recommend approval.
Excellent. Council, do you have any comments? All right, I'll take it to the public. Anybody here have any comments about this item?
Yep.
Seeing none, I'll come back to our council. Last chance, anyone? All right. Being no further discussion, do I have a motion on this item? Councilmember Morethlin?
Second.
Do I have a second? David Johnson, our council member from the East, one of them. All right, all those in, in favor, please raise your hands.
Point of order.
Yes, Councilmember Hall.
Just, he had to read the.
Oh, yes. Would you read the motion, Councilmember Will, Will Morethlin?
Yes.
Thank you. Technicalities.
All right. Motion to approve the resolution authorizing the city of Roswell to acquire approximately 24 acres of land located at 365 Hardscrabble Road in the amount of 7.5 million.
Now, Councilmember Johnson, would you like to second that?
I'll second that.
Beautiful. Let's make it right. All right, all in favor, please raise your hand. Excellent. It passes unanimously. All right. That's a long time coming. Okay. And City Attorney David Davidson, do you have anything on the City Attorney's Report this evening?
I do not have any other recommendations. We've already covered closure.
Okay. Well, then, do we have a, well, then we don't, I just adjourned. Okay. Well, with that, I will adjourn the meeting tonight, June 23rd, 2025. You all have a good evening.